Commissioner Hunt tells you where they are.
We ready? Good morning, everyone. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, the ones online. Agenda collaboration. Carrie, we got a few things to add.
Do under environmental services, but at the consideration of the future forest site prep and also the Toad Mountain request to solicit bids.
Anything else?
Can you repeat that again?
Yeah.
Thank you. Future Forest site map and Toad Mountain request to solicit bids under environmental. There is a memo that you would have received, both on email and then on the DAS.
Are you under environmental or NRM?
Yes.
Which one?
Yeah, environmental. Or NRM? Oh, environmental.
We got a NRM Parks Recreation.
Well, environment's on the back page, NRM's on the front.
No, it'd be on item.
Oh, that's a consent.
Item three.
Yeah, under land use environmental services, under Steve's, Steeble. Take any questions.
Anything else? Thought I'll ask for motion to confirm the agenda as adopted.
I'll move to do that.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Erica. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Minutes of May 21. Board meeting. Any changes?
Mr., go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the only thing for me is under the IT where we're tech mode. The on-call, I was thinking we should have something in there about how the calls were primarily not for Becker County and that we were going to figure out
Do some follow-up on that.
the background of that. Okay?
I wouldn't say primarily not, but those that aren't proportionate, we would ask for proportionate compensation.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, on page 104, under Agenda Minutes, number four, motion to approve accept consent agenda, remove the snowmobile prepayment claim. I think we should just explain that. It's a removal of the claim of some, I mean, it's confusing when it says prepayment claim. So, just the claim.
Just the claim.
For and for reason, for clarification.
Clarification for the discussion. Okay.
Because it sounds confused, the prepayment claim. Wait a minute, it's a double negative almost.
Okay.
I had one under human services. I don't know if it's a big deal, but the number one, it's on page three of four, where motion second to approve resolution for the public health full-time.
Two H?
Two, two H, yeah. That's paid for by, mostly by granting money, and then it'll be paid for by the, am I correct?
Yeah, both of them were paid for.
By grants, weren't they? From, well, partly.
Partly. Part of it's billing.
Mm-hmm. Isn't it billing?
Yeah, and then billing. So, I think we should put that in there so that, does that make sense? Is that agreeable?
So, it doesn't put like the county's funding it, is what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
You can just say motion two H, which utilizes federal for state grant or funding, grant funding? And they would say that in the resolution, but if you wanted in the minutes.
Yeah, I just, because, yeah, I would say in the resolution, but most people aren't gonna read that. That's all I have.
Richard?
No.
Nothing having addressed. Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
I'll second.
Erica and Dave, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Consent agenda. Items one through four. Anything that somebody wants to pull and discuss?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Erica, are you second?
I'll second.
Second by Barry. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Commissioners, open forum.
Mr. Chair. You know, with, I'm just curious what, maybe what the people in the audience think. The consent agenda is getting to be rather significant, and sometimes the discussion isn't for our benefit when we discuss the items. It's usually for the public or the press, you know, to tell them more about it. I'm just kind of curious if, you know, you look at our agenda and it, we're done pretty quick, but a lot of those items would be, you know, not the gambling permits, but just some of those items are, would be interesting for those that are in attendance anyway. I'm just curious if we should continue using it, expanding that, or should we, would it be more helpful to have some dialogue on some of these issues? I look at them like, there's good discussion and points that I would bring up to those that don't, aren't that familiar as, as we are, but I guess I was just curious which direction we, we should be moving as a board. Any other?
We can discuss, discuss that further and what.
Yeah, but I mean, does anyone, anyone have any opinions, or? Less is better? Oh, the more you talk. Okay. Just a thought. I don't know.
I guess we can have further discussion finance, too.
Yeah, we could talk about it.
What should or shouldn't be on there?
Yeah.
Need a little more discussions?
We can have a little more, a little more, a few more guidelines.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think there could be more direction and we could certainly, I know where, it's been kind of a test run to see what, which go, but you always have the option to blow it off if you're hearing that there, you know, more interest and more information as well.
But for those that have been on the committee and, you know, I've, we've discussed it, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
We're good with it, but if, you know, those others on the board, I mean, even, you know, like the Sheriff's Committee, there's, you know, the drones and the tether. I mean, interesting to know what those are capable of rather than just approving it. That, I mean, I learned a lot about it in the committee meeting, that the tether is only, you know, it has to be in one spot, but then it can continuously hover over a site for, you know, hours and hours rather than going up and down every, you know, 20 minutes.
There's a cord attached.
Yeah, it's a power cord. Yeah. Just those things, I just, I just curious as to how far we go. I mean, we could do the whole agenda consent agenda, but that's kind of a, it's kind of a, in my opinion, not very transparent.
Yeah, I think it is, I think it is good to be able to have some context behind what we're approving.
So, I mean, that consent agenda take, I mean, and through sheriffs, we said it can go on consent agenda, too, but some of that stuff probably should be, in my opinion, should be discussed in open, open forum a little bit more. It's just an opinion. But I was just curious, the rest of the board, continue like this. Our meeting's short, 10 o'clock.
I think we can.
We discussed it.
Yeah.
And not sure, should establish some guidelines of what should go on there.
We even mentioned it a little yesterday in finance, kind of what should this, shouldn't this.
Yeah.
We could do that in finance, then come back to you guys, if you agree with the guidelines. Or you guys have ideas and we can give, bring them to fin, you know, give them the finance and we can, that's on.
Or let Carrie know.
Let Carrie know, and then she can bring it up at finance and we can look at it, and then we can bring it back here to see what you guys think.
You know me, I can dialogue about any topic.
Oh, yeah, we know that, yeah.
That's what we're trying to learn.
Just put a muzzle on me, then it'll be good, I guess.
But I agree with some of the things you're saying.
No, we'll discuss that and bring it, bring it forward and get some guidelines.
Recommendation.
Anything else on that? Open forum, Alan Lysdahl? Yeah, it's just, Alan, state your name and address.
I'm, good morning, Chairman, Board members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present this to you. I believe, I'm Alan Lysdahl. I'm from Wadena. And I think this is, this is something that will not only benefit Becker County and all counties, but the state of Minnesota as a whole. We started last, early last, last March, when I found out about a trapper's name at the Capitol, and I thought, well, I'm a trapper, I'll go down there and I'll support, show my support. I also made appointments with Representative Kuntzen, Representative Weaver, and Senator Paul Oatkey to, I had, had some bobcat hunting and some wolf flesh issues I wanted to talk to him about. But in the, in the meantime, it occurred to me that those are problems, yes, but the real problem has to do with representation in the state of Minnesota. In Minnesota, the representation is, it's either very concentrated in some ways or very diluted in others. And so, I was wondering, what can be done, what can be done about that? And so, I thought, why do we have a bicameral legislature? Why do we have a House and a Senate? So, I went to do some research on why our founding fathers thought that that would be the way to go. And when I read what their reasons were, it was just pure genius. They, they decided that the House of Representatives was going to be based on proportional representation, where the number of representatives is based on population. And the Senate, though, is based on equal representation, where each state gets equal representation in the Senate. Okay, so the House of Minnesota legislature made up. The House of Representatives is based on proportional representation, just like the US House. But so is the Senate. So, what that means is they are just redundant extensions of each other. It's pure majority rule. And majority rule is not good at the state legislature. Majority rule, an example of it is a lynch mob. And a lynch mob, the majority rules, and it does not fare well for the minority. Or it's like, it's like two wolves and a sheep deciding what's for lunch. It just does, it does not, it's not conducive to good government. So, I thought, well, how can we change that? What can be done about that to make the, make the representation better throughout the state? And it hit me, why don't we do like the US government did, but make it where each county gets one senator? Because right now, the way it is, you got like Hennepin County has 15 senators in that county. Ramsey County has eight. And my county, Wadena County, we have zero. And I know that Becker County shares their Senate vote amongst other counties. So, like Wadena has one sixth of a vote, Hennepin County has 15. But if we could, if we could make it to where each county gets one senator, then it would be equal in the Senate. And that representation would be distributed throughout the whole state. And when I presented that to Krista Kuntzen down in the Capitol, she said, I'm gonna start drafting legislation to amend the Constitution and make this happen right now. So, the plan is right now, is that during the interim here, she's going to be doing the research and the drafting of a bill to amend the Constitution that will be introduced next session to, to make that representation equal throughout the state, which will benefit all the counties throughout the whole state. And it will also make for better government, because it, it will do several things. One thing it will do, it will prevent gerrymandering. I mean, the counties are the counties. That's already, that's already set. And then it will protect the minority from the majority, the passions of the majority. And that's what's going on right now in this state a lot, is the passions of the majority are running rampant over the minority. And it's like the minority has no say in the matter. But I, so I'm not asking for anything from you right now. But once Representative Kuntzen gets this bill drafted and introduced next session, I would like to come back and ask you to adopt a resolution in support of this, because like I said, it will do nothing but help the representation and the government in the state of Minnesota. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Different concept, but.
It was very, very interesting. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think any rural county would be supportive of this. I mean, any rural entity would certainly be supportive of this, because it certainly would bring some of our issues to the table and more of a negotiation system rather than a, this is how it's gonna be done system.
I worked for Hubbard County for 25 years as a forester, and I remember the land commissioner going down to the Capitol and trying to get, garner support for things that the counties needed, and they always came back with just a dejected look on their face that they couldn't not get any support, because all the representation is concentrated in the Twin Cities area and in the rural areas. The, it's hard to get your voice heard. And this, this would equalize things quite a bit.
It used to be most people from the metro were only a generation away from being rural.
Right.
And now we're getting two, three, you know, now they, they've lost all their roots and don't, don't have a sense of the rural communities anymore, it doesn't seem like.
That's, that's exactly right. Yes.
So, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you a lot. Yeah, it was good.
Okay. Somebody else on open forum? Reports correspondence? Well, let's go.
Had a Sheriff's Committee meeting, and sheriffs in here, I don't know. We, we discussed some things that were on consent, but.
It's a lot of stuff.
We, we had a meeting with, with our consultant, Scott, from the architect firm, to discuss different plans for the jail. So, we are, we're still looking at that, looked at different options. There are some options, if we want to attach it to the current building, it really hinders us, that we'd have to go a second floor. We don't really like to go a second floor, want to keep everything on one floor. So, the other option is, and we're still gonna look at that with some, with the, with impound not on that, impound a separate building, but the other option is, is have it on the site, but just on the south end of that. And then what, what we want, we also, and I think, I'm, I don't want to overstep what I'm saying and, but we, we looked, we looked at an offsite for impound again, too, very, you know, nearby. And what that would do, or what parts of that, we'd like a building there. And I'm trying to step carefully, because I don't know what, what need, what should be public, out in the public on it yet, but we are, we are looking at different options and options 1A, 2A, and 3A, and we're getting some more dialogue coming back. The, the site is hindering, hindering us to some extent. I mean, so we're looking at, and then the water, the, how much water, and we've, we've said, we've looked into that and said we've got enough water runoff to hold in capacity
Decentred pond there.
to satisfy the, the building, so. Who else? I also asked then, for them, if we're gonna look at this, to look at if, if it was attached specifically, the humidity issue we have at the current jail.
Yep. And then one other thing to add, the addition, if that, all these options don't affect the ability to add on to the jail either, or the water retention, too.
Right.
So, that was all covered in that.
The plan then is to bring this to the board September, meet, one of the September meetings, to, for discussion and a better overview and dialogue to where we're, where we're at. The other thing, and it was on the agenda, we approved it, some more mental health hours. It's, I think it's critical, where we're at in our society, it's critical that we have more mental health hours. The option, too, that we approved didn't, doesn't include, we still, no matter which way, even currently, we have to pay if it's holidays, we had to pay. So, we didn't feel that they're gonna give us a deal if they're including that, so we wanted the lesser option. But I think in Otter Tail, ACH pulled, pulled their nursing from Otter Tail County. So, Otter Tail's having some real problems and, and, you know, we have to recognize that, you know, we have to have these services, and we have to make sure that they feel that, you know, they have our support, too. So, it's not just a, it's not just a, we're, we're gonna, we're the bosses and we can tell you what, I mean, we have to work really close and partnership with, with our providers, because if they pulled out like they did in Otter Tail, I mean, it's, it would be bad. I mean, we would be.
This, this was adding, what, $16?
$16, yeah.
Another nurse for $16 to home.
Yeah.
A week, yep.
Yeah, so the one, you know, so you don't have that gap in timing. And I think as we, as you see, and I don't agree with some of the laws, how we have to, how we have to, how we're, we're so responsible for the inmates. I mean, no matter what, we are responsible for their health there, you know, and protect them. So, the mental health portion of it is, is significant, too. So, Klein McCarthy, that's who we deal with. I was drawing a blank.
I was gonna tell you that, but who you remember?
Scott, Scott from Klein. Went well, and I was surprised, too, that, you know, if and when, I just sent an email, a quick email, like Carrie, I think I see, see, doing, this was a while ago, what the interest rates were for bonding. And they were, they were still relatively low, quite lower than what we can get money for. So, it wasn't, it wasn't too, it wasn't too earth-shattering, the, the news. But, you know, if we did something, we have a, a bond payment that's being completed with the courthouse in February of 26.
Six.
Six, I think?
Yep.
So, when you look at building, you don't like to bond for, you know, add more tax dollars, as this one would, you would not remove it, you would just continue with that. So, anything else, Dave, and?
There was, no. I don't think so.
I think everything else is on.
Yeah, everything else is on the agenda.
Richard and I had land, land use or NRM, and Dustin Roy was there. He is the, I think is Director of Natural Resources from the tribe, and I tell you, he, he's a really, I think, real level, level-headed guy. But, but again, he, he is, he works for the council, so he can't, you know, he has to follow their guidelines. But I haven't heard, we, Mitch was gonna, Mitch and him were gonna get together, and I never saw how that, how that went. They were gonna go onsite and look at that. But we'll have, probably have a little bit of discussion.
There's gonna be more discussion once it gets to the topic.
He was very good to deal with.
Yeah.
He was in favor of logging. I mean, that's, but he's.
He understands the need for it.
He actually does.
Yeah, and I, and I think I told him this, if we could keep us politicians, both the council and us, out of there, I think our departments work well together when they, when they work together. But anyway, and last night, I went out to dump locks and review, and looked at the troll, and the amount of people out there, and most of them are fishing, but there was a group, there was three, four groups at the troll, looking at it and taking pictures. But the fishermen were catching fish out there, too. So, that, that's a busy, it's a highly-used area, and I think it's a great asset that we have. I bet you, I don't know how many people were fishing, but I saw really, some really nice bass and a nice crappie caught off from the Lake Sally side and.
You get that new shelter done, too, it's gonna really add.
Yeah.
It was, I was there with Mitch and crew, worked on a tram Saturday morning, and even Seal for the divers, I can't believe there's this many people. There's a steady crowd coming through down. Look at the tram, they're probably there looking at the troll, but going further south, and it was constant people.
There was 20 vehicles parked there, and we were there, you know, 7:30 at night, and it's, it's just a beautiful spot.
I think a lot of them were on bikes. They probably parked over at the bowling alley and biked across or someplace in town.
Yeah, I saw a guy on bike.
Their families, and very, very busy out there.
But that trolls out, you're gonna have a lot of that.
In NRM, we also had a request on a tax forfeit property on, by Little Cormant. We just said that's, it's, it was right on a road. There was no build, I mean, it's just, and we said we're not interested in selling it, or, and it's, it's the county land and not gonna do anything with it. So, the, one of the owners on the end of that wanted it to be widened, and we said, you're welcome to do that if you want.
Which road is that on?
It's, I don't even know if it's a township road. It's a, it's a private access road to kind of a peninsula point.
Yeah.
It's not the couple of parcels on Love and that.
No.
JU's inquired about out there.
I'm sure not. This was the one, this is the end, and I think Richard knew where it was.
Yeah, it's that, it's that little skinny road, little lakes on both sides of it there.
I think the rest, anything else, Richard, on that one?
Yeah, I don't think so.
My House Lieutenant, Julian Powers, 22nd of May, had Rob Sip from, he's the Executive Director of Red River Watershed Management Board. I did, they did ask what, what we needed. I said, I said, we have a, a new board, and I said, after in the first year, I would recommend that they come out and introduce themselves and explain the whole hierarchy of how the red board and authority works. So, they'll be coming, asking to come sometime after the first year to give a report. I don't think I, I'll have to look here, but I don't think I had anything else. Oh, Sunnyside, we had Sunnyside.
Yep.
Still doing very, very well. We're at near capacity for.
One.
Yeah, one was, and we didn't want to add that, because then it would be fulfilling, well, we couldn't fill it. But we have a, it's a double room, so then the individual wouldn't be as happy with two. And but hiring out there is well, we are doing well financially and.
The, yep, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, the one thing to add to that, too, is the nursing home, what is it called, the Nursing Home Workforce Board, which is, they, they decided to add some unfunded mandates to nursing homes where they're going to require certain pay amounts for certain employees. And we, we found out that we're pretty good on most of them. We're already, we're above on some, we're right at the amount on some, some were a little bit lower, or were a little low. And our nursing home, you know, is doing well, like Barry said, but we're just, we kind of discussed how, we're kind of concerned about it.
The governor signed off on this. It's a mandated increase in wages.
Yep, with, with no funding.
For individuals within the nursing homes. And there's different, I mean, different.
Different way.
Different positions, we get different, and it's a two-year phase in.
Yeah, it's, it'll be 20, for January 1st to 26th. So, a lot of these nursing homes that aren't doing as well as us, the smaller ones, that they probably are really concerned.
Yeah, and for those that aren't aware, our nursing home is, is probably, I think it's probably the best small nursing home in the state, financially and staff-wise.
Staff-wise.
I mean, it is, it's, and we hear that wherever we go with, right now, we're Minnie Waska management and even Equiments, like it's, we've always been top performer and, and we've always, even through COVID, we, we maintained, had COVID money, but we always had a positive cash balance, I mean, positive cash flow. So, it's a, it's a gem, and I credit that now to our management. Ashley is out there, has just done an amazing job, so.
She does an amazing job.
So, that's it.
I had, I'll go next. I had the, I had the DAC. So, Madison Blayhut, who's a, a foreign, she graduated from Trail Lakes High School this spring. She's doing that, we talked about her doing that work in front of the building. And it, I was there when we, when I went to the meeting last week and walked in, she was busy working away, and it's gonna look, it looks tremendous. I didn't go, get a chance to go by this morning to look at it, because she's probably done by now. But I'd encourage everybody to go and drive by the DAC and look at how nice it looks out front. But then, then also, too, at the DAC, we have that big lot. They have that big, huge lot to the east of the DAC, which is huge space. And of course, they had to pay for the specials on the road, new road that's going there. So, that spurred a conversation about what can we do, use that lot for, to make some money? Or to bring, or to make, to make some money, bring some more revenue in, and also give more experiences and duties and so forth to the client, to the day clients there. So, one of the things that our, our Executive Director, Sarah Hill, presented was a possibility of creating a thrift store in, in that lot. I know, I had the same thing, same idea you said. And then when she started explaining and how, going through the process and how the need is that, even though there is a Boys and Girls Club thrift store, there, there's a, there's a thrift, the DAC in Park Rapids has one. So, we are actually going to go to Park Rapids and look at it and, and see how it's operated and see what they do, and have them explain to us the process of why they, you know, thought there was a need and so forth. And then we're also going to go to, oh, boy, there's another DAC. Perham, we're gonna go into Alternative Solutions in Perham, to their, their Development Achievement Center. They also have a similar. Um, they also have a similar, um, process in theirs too, so. We're gonna see, we're gonna explore and see if, if it is a possibility, if we can do that or if it's just a, something. But the nice thing about it is it does allow the clients to do things and then, and operate it. They wouldn't have any overhead as far as employees because one of their employees would just be assigned to that to manage the workers, which would be D A C, D A C clients, so. I don't know. It's, it's, it's an idea. It's a possibility.
Well, the, the overhead would be the building and.
The buil-, building, the building, yep, yep.
And, and I just don't see how you can possibly cash flow.
That's my.
Building a building and that's.
That was all.
If there's a building, existing building, it'd be a whole lot different than, than.
That was all of our concerns. Yep, exactly, correct.
But I don't think there's a lot of money in secondhand stores.
No.
I mean, a lot of upside.
I, I have a tendency to agree. Um, we also, the D A C also currently is going to have five new residential clients. So if you don't know what a residential client is, there are clients that live at home and the D A C sends employees out to their homes, not maybe necessarily every day, but two to three times a week or some of them are every day. They'll, they'll take them places, they'll do things with them, they'll bring them, maybe, maybe they have a job, they'll bring them to their job. Or maybe they have to go to the grocery store or whatever. They'll, they'll, they'll do those type of services. So it, then I would assume by this week now, they probably have those five new clients. And then, so they had to hire another person, um, to help with, with, had another staff person to help manage those. Um, they also, we also have, they also got one new day client. A day client is a person that comes to the D A C during the day and does, you know, does the activities. And usually on an average, they have between thirty and thirty-seven day clients. So that, those numbers, I, I don't remember if you remember the numbers I brought up a year ago, but they're in the low, they're in the low to mid twenties for day clients and the residential clients were, they're approximately about thirty. There's, I think they, they're at twenty-eight or twenty-nine for residential clients. Those residential clients were below twenty before and now, and, and so were the day clients that were in the mid twenties probably. So they're getting more revenue generated by getting more clients. Um, the, the, the atmosphere of the D A C has become better. Uh, they've done some stuff inside. They've done some repainting. They're working on replacing some furniture and, and making positive changes inside, so. It's looking up for the D A C. It's, we do, there's a ways to go to get it to not look like a, like a institution when you walk in, but it's getting better, so. That is all I have. I'll stop talking.
Here, go.
I can go. Uh, we had our E D A workshop last week with the Extension Office. I, I thought we had great attendance. I think we had around thirty people there, a variety of, um, area E D A representatives, city representatives and business representatives. A lot of discussion about, you know, of course, our housing crisis in Becker County is not just in Becker County, it's throughout the state, but that we, we do have one, um, among, you know, the need for childcare, which we all know. And then just continue to have conversation about the labor force in Becker County really is kind of where we're at, is where we're going to be, that, that there's going to be more jobs and there are people to work them for the foreseeable future. Um, but it was, I thought it was a really good workshop. Uh, also had Curling One Watershed One Plan. We've reached the point where the plan is completed, so it's now at the internal review, um, portion. And then I believe the public input will be in August. Then I had Cornerstone last night.
Just, just to comment on the One Watershed One Plans and I think John would attest this, if you have good, good soil and water, I mean, like our soil and water is very good to work with and, and those are the people doing the work. And if you try, I mean, I think we, we have exceptional staff over there, so we can.
Yes.
We can feel that we're being represented very well when they're, they're, and, and so then us as policymakers, we, we, it makes our job very easy. We don't have to.
I, I depend on Brian.
Yeah.
Otter Tales, Water, or Watershed is, or.
Is Otter, part of it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, they're, they've changed a lot and they've done very well, I know, on the Otter Tail.
Mm-hmm. They, they actually at the one meeting asked Brian for input because we have so many watersheds in Becker County that they work with, so Brian has been a lot of help in, in the process, so.
He's the lead on, um, the Wild Race. I mean, he's kind of the lead person of Wild Race Watershed.
Yeah, I, they're hoping it'll be implemented now, starting in January. I think December it'll go in front of Bowser, so. So, yeah. Then I had Cornerstone last night. Their projected opening of their Cornerstone Collective is, um, June eleventh, which is really, you know, their restaurant slash art shop. Um, listening to them last night, it, it's pretty exciting. Most of the employees that are there are going to be youth. They have just the managers of it, so it's a great opportunity for the youth. They have, um, I believe five, um, youth from the Yes Network, which will be working there through the summer and a couple from, um, rural Minnesota Sep. So they're really, um, youth oriented and I think doing a lot of good things over there. They've had a lot of different art projects that they've been able to do due to the grants that they've obtained, so. That's a good stuff happening there. That's all I got.
Richard.
I had environmental with you. Um, we're gonna start requiring people to cover their loads. Um, and we're gonna try and be easy on them at first, but people are losing a lot of garbage on the way to the landfill.
Hmm.
And some big pieces of paneling and, oh, it's ridiculous. And I live on fifty-nine and the garbage that my wife picks up is unbelievable.
Yes, she got a big chunk a while ago. He walked into her life.
Somehow this turned into a road. But we're gonna, we're gonna try and ease into it, so if you don't have your load co- covered.
Are you talking commercial or, or everybody?
Everybody.
There is an ordinance in place already.
For commercial?
Oh, oh.
Yeah, for all, but we're just, we just haven't been.
So like covered with the tarp or?
Yeah.
Yeah, something.
Having it secured.
I've gotten calls from other people on the, you know, on the Otter and that.
One forty-four.
Yeah. And so there's just so much garbage laying around, it's ridiculous. And so we're gonna try and ease people into it and get them to do it eventually. If they don't start doing that, then there's gonna be fines, but.
Or you just don't accept it or what?
I don't know. We haven't.
Well, I think it was laid out, there'd be a certain increase in the dome charge if you come without because.
Yeah.
It costs, a lot of times the, the transfer station staff will go and actually pick this stuff up because it's a hazard laying out there. And we're gonna do, you know, social media and news, get the, uh, get it out there in the public, what the issue is and what the penalties could be, so.
What, what type of loads are exempt? I mean, so if I bring a, a load of, I mean, a tire, I don't have to cover a tire, you know, like, so how do you know what's, what's, should be required?
And we haven't really gotten to that.
No.
But, you know, something like that is, something that can blow out really is what we're talking about. If, you know, if you've got heavy stuff, they're not gonna, you know, give you a hard time about that. But if you've got stuff that, that can be blown out and there is a lot of, I see them coming down the highway and they, they drive a little slower, but stuff is still blowing out. I, I don't know how you don't notice that happening, but, yeah, so, yeah, if, if you've got something that can, we're gonna, we're gonna try and use some common sense with it, so. Uh, and then the other thing we were gonna talk about, um, giving a raise to these S T S workers, we're paying.
Iquik.
Iquik, is that what they are?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah. Uh, but it's, it's the.
It's, it's kind of the same, more of their state.
Yeah, they're, they're ones in jail out here and we're trying to attract, we have attracted more of them by giving them a little something. And so we're, we're actually trying to get more of them here, because.
The issue along with that, as like Richard's mentioned, is we're down to four on the sword crew. And we discussed it some yesterday and I think Sheriff Glanor too, that if we could have a pool of, try to maintain age or something and that way if one drops or goes back or something, we still have enough, because of, so, we have to go and hire people for that sword crew, then it gets.
Yeah, we, we are saving a lot of money with them right now.
Yeah.
And, and that, I guess I forgot to mention, or we forgot to mention too, that, um, when we are, when we get these new prisoners and, and they're doing productive stuff, I mean, that, that's good and if we can off, if we can, we're looking at, at, looking at the cost of hiring another full-time person to full staff because we are look, you know, as you increase your numbers, um, you have to staff that and, and um, there's lots of reasons, but I won't get into that, but it's, it's being considered and it was, it was talked about a little bit and we were looking for some numbers, but that's, you know, if you have, ask more for more prisoners and we're seeing a little bit more from Otter Tail again, so, um, when you have those, um, you have to have it staffed accordingly, so.
Yeah, I think we talked a little bit about that at Finance where you need one, a constant employee, not the.
Very well.
Very well.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Uh, the other thing, environmental, I think you all got a copy of, of the notes from our meeting. Steve does a good job getting those out.
Yep.
Uh, coming forward, be working on some skid steer quotes for replacement out there. And also working with, uh, Shane in the Sheriff's Department on possibly getting some hand down armor radios that they can actually, they'll work around the site, so. Shane is working well with them, so probably won't pay a lot of out-of-pocket costs. Sheriff Glanor said he's gonna donate a whole bunch out there, so.
Sure.
Other than that, uh, we had a planning and zoning hearing.
Yep.
Uh, negotiations. And I had Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste there. They're looking at, uh, developing a website for the facility and with an employee section, similar to what we have here in the county, the infrastructure or whatever, the, Infinet, that's called, where the employees can go on and see their benefits and all this. They don't have that down there, so there's a lot of. So there, we, there was a person that presented, it's a little more upstart cost than we were thinking, but once it's on, ongoing, it's very little to maintain it monthly, so. I think the facility will probably eventually will, will, uh, go along with that. And then, uh, there's a letter of understanding went out to all county engineers on the use of the ash in road construction, so we'll, all the county engineers knows what to expect and if there's any additional costs, what it might be and what they're responsible for. So we're moving forward on that and hopefully, I don't know if we'll have anything ready for twenty-four construction or being twenty-five. Uh, then with the, when that unit was down for major repairs, they've been burning over their monthly average, so they're gaining on what they lost. So by the end of the year, uh, Brian down there, the manager, appears they'll be back right up to what they budgeted for burning, so. Other than that, things were going pretty well down there. It's one of my shorter meetings is chair down there, so.
Just one more thing. We also, all of us, after the last board meeting, had that, we had a comprehensive land use plan, uh, work session.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and we, we figured, we started figuring out some things and, and things are moving along, so we're getting ready to, to hopefully get further along, more work done.
You know, one of the things I was gonna ask and I was gonna email you is for any of those where there's yell, you know, where they're, where we're looking at changing the zones or being specific for either the, the residential or the mixed use, those townships, I'd like a more detailed map of those townships to go to those townships and say, this, you know, do you show the township specifically where those new, new, um, zones would be? So if we could ask them to provide that, the townships that have either a mixed use or a residential, the yellow or the greens, or maybe even, I don't think the egg would be.
Purple.
The concentrated egg would be needed, or do you want that? You can show that on a bigger map. That doesn't, but those, it'd be nice to see very specifically where those lines are for those communities, because they might have, they might say, oh, this is wrong, or this would be bad, or, um, some more specific, uh, mapping on that.
Coming up, there's blowing up a little more.
Township, you know, just a township map the size of a paper.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just per township.
Shows what the new zone would be.
Where those lines would be. And, and that should be because they, you know, when we look at a big wall map, you know, you, you can't see if it's on, you know, where the road is compared to, so. If we could, if I could get that or if anyone else interested in those for their townships, I'd like to present those to the township, so.
Yeah, my township was, or my.
A lot of them are, a lot of them don't need it, but where there's a, where those colors, where those different zones are.
Each residential.
Really think the future expansion is gonna be.
And change of zone. I mean, if we're talking a change of requirements, I think they should be, you know, very much aware of it before we.
I guess my district, Lake, Lakeview and Burlington area, probably not same.
Yep.
Yeah, and probably Detroit too.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe even Cal, you know, if, if there's any changes around the small cities too, I mean, they might, they might have some input on those and present them either way.
Anything else?
Um, we have a meeting, district meeting coming up.
On Friday.
Friday.
Friday at eight o'clock.
Yep.
Otter Tail.
Yep, Otter Tail Cordels, or.
At the.
Government Center.
Government Center area.
You're gonna go?
Yes, that's my plan. Yes, right early.
Okay, well.
So Carrie, you're gonna have, you're gonna, will, will you be the speaker for us on our behalf?
Well, I usually get that job at the last minute, yes.
No, I.
You're gonna tell me, Ed?
Not in three days.
I think, tell you Friday morning, you're home.
One thing we wanna make sure that we, um, address is the, the, discuss the White Earth Resolution or the.
Yeah, yeah. One thing they did a little different, Ryan and Chairman Sterns from Audina County, District Four, we got together virtual with all county chairmans in the district and that was, uh, Sterns brought that up.
Oh, good.
That is, so it'll probably come up down there too and a proper mention of the issue is that not only Becker County, but it's gonna be other counties that are gonna have the same issue, so. Okay, anything else? Not, uh, appointments. Do we have a Buffalo Red River?
Um.
Or is that?
It's just a notification, I think, at this time. Um, we're gonna have to, you know, advertise it in word of mouth because John Hanson has noted that he's not going to be seeking re- reappointment.
Okay, I was wondering about that.
Um, he, he talked to me and he's been on there many years, so we should make sure we send him a, a thank you card for his years. I mean, he's been on there.
He's been at least thirty, hasn't he?
Yeah, I would imagine so. So, done, done a nice job, very, very calm and.
Yeah, I've been John for years, so.
So I don't know. I asked him if he had a replacement ready because Kevin Farms, you know, his son, he didn't say. I don't think Kevin was interested, but.
Any other appointments at this time?
Could you make sure that's on the website for opportu-, appointment opportunity? I think it probably is.
Uh, Carrie, Minister.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just a couple of updates for the board. Um, we'll begin the process for the preliminary, preliminary time as far as budgets, so I've had a brief conversation with Mary and Nicole to put together some timelines and then starting to meet with Department Hanson Budgets and then we'll bring that forth to finance, uh, in the very near future. Um, we are going to be doing assessor interviews this week, so thank you to the two commissioners, Nelson and Jobson, that have agreed to be on that interview panel. We had some really good applicants, so, uh, it's looking hopeful. And Nancy, our interim assessor, is down to about thirty-two hours, so we will, I will continue speaking with her about what that's going to look like in the future as far as the transition and hopefully we can get that position filled in the, sooner than later.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so she's been busy working up there and may have some recommendations as well.
She is going to be invited in the interviews also.
Yes, yes. She's agreed also.
There she is.
Yep, there she is, yes. So yes, she will be a part of the interviews as well.
We're talking about you.
Yeah.
Interviews on Thursday?
Yes.
Good.
Um, and then from our engineer, there was a, a recommendation to move forward with the lease agreement for the utility lease easement out to the northeast part of our building and that's been reviewed by our county attorney. I haven't actually seen that yet, but that was his recommendation, uh, to authorize for signing of that.
Basically a ten by ten spot in the northeast corner out here. What it does is they got quite an overload on Washington Avenue for electricity and it's more or less that when they have these events like this past street fair and other ones, they really gotta start for electricity, so it's, it's gonna help that and probably some of the businesses, some towns, so.
It's a need for the ci-, for the city infrastructure. It's, they wanna be good partners.
So, yep, that was the.
Is it, is it big enough area, so if they need more?
Then they'd have to come back.
Come back, but it's just for that.
Yeah.
For that purpose at this point, yeah. And then the last item I have for consideration, which I would have pushed out, uh, last night. which I would have pushed out last night, was the contract for ASME, and I'd actually just got an email from Zach that they did a vote to approve from the union side, approval of the, the contract. So we would like to move forward with signatures on that, and that was within the parameters that we've discussed as of the board.
We need a motion to.
Yes, I think that would be the best.
I'll make a motion to accept the ASME contract.
Approve?
Approve the ASME contract.
Yep.
Approve.
Motion by Dave. I'll second that. Further discussion? I'm glad we got one, and.
Yeah.
And.
And I should note, it is a three-year contract, so we were very pleased with that.
Thank you to those that served. I'm, negotiations are never fun, so thank you, and hopefully we can get moving on all of them, and.
We only have eight more to go. No, I, hopefully the other ones all, I think we're last, we're hanging pretty tight.
I, I think we're pretty close.
I think we're close, yeah.
But I've been saying that for months, so don't quote me on that.
Are you, can you give us, can you give us the final terms, or kind of just a brief summary of it for those that are in attendance, being this being, or do you want to wait till we approve it? Maybe we should vote to approve it, and then, then you can just give us some highlights. I'm sure everyone's curious on what those are.
Uh, sure.
So, should we vote?
Everybody in favor to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie.
So generally, for this particular contract, there was a lot of discussion about the implementation of the new wage table. So what, what ended up happening in this contract, that's probably the biggest highlight of this, is implementing the, the wage table as of April one, retroactive to April one. So what will happen this year specifically for those individuals on the, under that contract was, they'll get a 2.5% COLA retroactive back to January, and then will be placed into the new salary structure, and then will be allowed a step movement if they're able to move within the new salary structure. That's probably the biggest high point. And then moving forward, then we will have the COLA adjustments, and then continue on, there's been a lot of discussion with the unions as well as to maintain the structure and do market adjustments if needed, and to continue reviewing this on an ongoing basis.
So years two and three were, we're in this, we're in the structure now, we're in the, the new, the new wage scale, and there would just be simply a COLA. We don't like, I don't like calling it COLA, because then you're requi- then you're saying you want to follow inflation, and I don't like that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
Just state the.
Three and a half, three and a half.
Yes, that's what was agreed upon, so.
Just one other addition there, too, because there's several of those that hang up point that they're stepped out in old system.
Oh, yes.
And we, touch on that.
Sure, sure. So how we address that, we had, within several of these contracts, but for specifically this one, you have an individual that was stepped out on the old scale, and then they came in to the new scale, perhaps their anniversary's already passed prior to April. The board had authorized that they allow, they are allowed a step movement as well within the new system, because they didn't get any movement within the old scale, and they're still within the market within the new scale, so. I believe we had a few of those in this contract, that that was applicable to as well.
I believe, too, this is, I, that, the, the salary part is identical to what we approved for the non-union employees.
Yes, it is identical.
I think so. I mean, moving into that scale cost us money, but it was two and a half, three and a half, three and a half.
Yep.
For the three.
Yep, correct. For the increase, not the pop.
Any other comments, questions on that?
Again, thank you.
Yep, that's all I have.
Nancy, thank you, and then I think we'll take a little break.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Today I bring before you roughly fifty-six abatements that are impacting Pay 24, and there's also a group of tax stipulations that came through for state assessed property owned by Minnesota Energy. So that impacted Pay 24 and also went back to impact Pay 23, and that was handled through court tax, or tax court, sorry. So those are the abatements that we bring before you today.
Motion to approve the abatements?
Um, can you give us that dollar amount, then?
Yeah.
Is it the bottom, bottom red?
The bottom red.
Adjustment a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty-four thousand, roughly.
One, one twenty-four, one eighty-four?
Yeah. And I believe roughly fifty thousand dollars of that is through that tax court stipulation.
Okay. I'll make motion to approve.
Motion by Barry.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Further discussion? Hearing on all, the members say aye?
Aye.
Carrie.
And Nancy, thank you for bailing us out, and for helping us with our interviews, too.
Yeah, not a problem, not a problem. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We could do land use and environmental services, me and both Steve and Mitch are here, and then we'll, then we'll break.
Morning.
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 We had a number of items to, for consideration, and apparently the GIS license and Verizon contract have both been approved through the consent agenda. Is that correct? Okay. The other items were talked about in Finance, were the Toad Mountain project, our logging, sales refund request, and then also a planting, a, a contract for planting preparation for the 2025 tree planting, proposals from Future Forest Incorporated. I guess the first item on the agenda, in the order that I have them, are talking about timber permit refund request. The logger that was on the site when we had, there was a protest up by Strawberry Lake. He moved off the site, and he has indicated at times that he might want his money back, a refund from the money that he paid for that stand, and he hasn't formally made that request right now, but I'd like to have board consideration and authorization to allow us to pay back that, those funds if he requests it.
To continue on Steve's dialogue, in committee, we, we didn't necessarily want to do, we, we want to keep, this is going to be a site that's going to be cut. I think we were adamant that this is going to be cut, but this, there's extenuating circumstances. I, I think we would like the board to give, give Carrie and the committee authorization to, to be flexible on this one because of the circumstances. That's what we're asking. We're not necessarily, maybe, maybe extension, maybe, but, or, or if we can find some resolution. But this is a, during our meeting, we felt there was two, two issues here, a short term for this individual site, and then long-term continuing, trying to improve the relations with, with the tribe, so we, we get in front of some of the issues that could be coming up in the future. So I think we can do the long-term things, and I, and I think I said earlier that Dust, Dustin Roy was really good to work with, and we probably have some more information for us on, if you guys got out and looked at the site, and how we can try to, I don't know if we can avoid the protesting, because the protesters aren't necessarily have a, they just want to protest for some, and it doesn't matter what's going on, but I think we can, we can at least work with the tribe and find solutions to, if there's areas of concern. I mean, if there's something that they have a concern, we certainly can avoid cutting in areas that have a, a significant concern for them, because we cut maybe 1% of our forest annually, so we can stay away from any area that's, just like we did for the North Country Trail. We, we, we accommodated and, and worked together, so I think that's what we're asking on this one, is, is give, give the committee and Carrie authorization to be flexible on maybe up to full refund. He's got some cut out there he'd like to get to, but it's, when you move stuff, it costs a lot of stuff to move all your equipment, and it's just a.
It's been a hardship for this guy.
Yeah.
So we want to help, we want to help in any way we can, and so whether, whether we give him somewhere else to cut, or whatever, if he wants his money back, whatever it is, but.
And as a, you know, we had, we had two individuals from the logging industry online helping us, we're dialoguing, too. They reckon, you know, they were both supportive of alternate solutions to this, you know, and it was, they, they praised him for moving offsite to try to avoid the confrontation at the time. But he also has extenuating circumstances on his limited cuts that he has available, so we, as a government, we can't just say, oh, we're gonna, you know, we have to be fair to everyone, we can't just give them big cuts, but we can do maybe a smaller cut to, to, to get them through, or, but, so that's where we're at. We're trying to, we're trying to be reasonable on both sides and, and work through the, the short terms for this individual, it's a short-term problem, and then we have the longer-term problem of, of how we, how to move forward and, and get in front of any possible, at least tribal, the, the council's concerned. I mean, protesters, we can't control, we can't, can't appease all the concerns they have, but if we can work with council and just get their tip a person out there looking, give us any, if, if there's sites that they want, where areas that we, they want us to avoid, we certainly can do that, so.
But we can keep those protesters off of the guy's log pile and get on.
Well, we're looking at ordinance, a possible ordinance and current state law, and I think Sheriff Glanor has some avenues that we can address if needed. Hopefully, you know, hopefully they're, they're, they don't come back, but I think this might, it might continue, it might settle down, who, who knows?
Yeah, we'll have to see.
Yeah. Do you need a motion to?
Um, I think that's what we're asking, just allow us, allow flexibility on this contract for, for up to full refund because of the extenuating circumstances of the, of the, of the cut.
Is that your motion?
I will make that a motion.
I'll second it.
And again, I want to stress that we plan on moving forward with this cut.
Okay.
At some point, but this logger has some immediate needs, and if he can't get to it, we want to be, have some flexibility, either to pay, pay it back or extend it for him, if that's, if that's the mo- you know, if that's the board's wishes.
Any other discussion? Got a motion and second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both? Carrie.
Thank you.
Do you want to just do highly right away?
We got two more things coming on.
Yep. Additional things on the.
Oh, that's right.
There's a couple of additional items. One is Toad Mountain Project. Nick Banks from the Trust for Public Land reached out to me, and he said they're close to getting a purchase agreement, and if you look at the timing of when we're going to apply for grants, and the amount of time that it takes to put together a master plan, I would like to move forward and start soliciting quotes to enter into a contract with a firm to do the master planning out there for, for Toad Mountain Project, if the purchase agreement gets signed soon. The estimated cost is going to be fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. We've talked about this in our NRM committee at length. I also attached in here the timelines. The reality is, is that if we move forward, we do the master plan, and we get to a point where the, where we need the master plan to apply for the grants, the grants get approved, and at that point, the Trust for Public Land's going to finish up their due diligence, and then it'll eventually turn over to the county, but there's going to be a timeframe in there between time when the grants are approved and when we actually take ownership, where we'll have some costs or interest. And if we miss this deadline now for applying for grants, it just pushes everything.
Yeah.
So, what I would, I guess, coming back to this, I would like to be able to move forward and get quotes, and then if the purchase agreement does get signed, then I would bring both back to the board for consideration. The board would not be considering the purchase agreement, but they'd be considering the quotes.
Steve, we need this master plan in place to almost even apply for the grants?
We do.
So they won't even look at it, so.
That's correct.
And I think we're, we're under the assumption the purchase agreement is contingent on those, those grants being received.
Yes.
So when, when this comes back, if, so we can go ahead and, and ask for quotes now, but when this comes back, it's going to be decision time, and we're going to have to have as many answers as possible, how much the cost is going to be, and, I mean, for the interest rate, or Mary maybe have some cash that we can, no, we can't float any cash out of Mary, but probably, probably wouldn't be able to do that for auditing purposes for grant monies to, to do that either, but, and then what the options are, what the other options are, so.
Correct.
It's getting close to, we have to make a decision, because this, the total project for us to get it, even with grants, is going to cost us, you know, a minimum two hundred thousand.
Probably a minimum two fifty, probably.
Yeah, it'll be two hundred for the interest, for the carrying time, and then also you have this fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars for the planning process that we're going to have to, that'll come out of pocket.
So, and we're gonna, at that, at that time, we're going to look at county ownership rather than, I mean, they, they would rather have, they, they're not 100% sold on state DNR ownership as they are would be county ownership, as I, I understand.
That's correct. The seller would like it to go into, into county ownership, they specifically said that.
So I, you know, that, it'll be decision time then, and we, I mean, the funds are in the natural resource that has to be spent on, on recreation, so it's, but it's a big chunk of that money, so that's, that's the decision time. But it, it's a good decision. I mean, the property I'm sure is valued at over a couple million, so, and it has a couple beautiful lakes, lakeshore property that would, that would really be beneficial to those in the public, so.
Along with that, ask for a motion to go out for.
Motion to. Motion to go out to seek quotes for the.
That's mine.
Master plan.
Master plan for Toad Mountain.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Barry, second by David. Further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The third item is consideration of a site prep bid for 2024 for 2025 planting. That, this came up at the last minute. Normally we wouldn't bring this forward without going through our committee or putting it in the board packet, but we just got it Sunday, and the guy, there's only one person around there that does this, and he's did ours in the past one year, we missed it because he just couldn't get to it. And he emailed Mitch on Sunday saying he's going to be here in the next couple weeks, which obviously is a time crunch on our part, so I'd just like if, I'd appreciate if the board would give consideration to approve us to spend up to seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars to do site prep on sixty-three acres for this spring for next year's planting. That would be going to Future Forest Incorporated.
Motion by Barry.
I'll second.
Second by Richard. Further discussion?
Do you want to have in the motion your seventeen eight eight zero max, or request, the request?
Yeah, include.
Include the request.
Future Forest Incorporated for seventeen eight eighty. It's appropriate. Richard, is that okay with you?
Further discussion? Not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both?
Mr. Chair, would the board like any updates with regards to what they know about the process with?
How, yeah, how did the, how did your site visit work go?
Yeah, we didn't, I, Steve and I both tried to call and email Dustin and Jamie, who's the tribal historic preservation officer. I haven't heard any response yet from, unfortunately, from an email that I sent the day after our meeting on NRM. So that has yet to happen, unfortunately. But Steve and I have had plenty of conversations with Shippel, the State Historic Preservation Office, Office of State Archaeologists, just communicating how this process works, a standard procedure of review of timber sales. I've had lots of conversations with other counties. Everybody's kind of looking at, you know, how, how we are going to run our process, and, and other counties run theirs in a way where they look at certain websites, the public reviewer map, but it's, it's unique that 80% of our landfill base is in reservation, so. I don't know, Steve, if you got.
And just to continue on with that, with Mitch said, we've had extensive conversations with the three different departments. Long and the short of it is, I think Shippel, they receive a lot of requests, and their numbers of requests for review have been going up a lot, so they're short-staffed, they're behind responding on their timelines and those type of things, so their standard responses for the applicant, if, if they can't make a decision to do a, a level one review, to contract that out. The other ones have indicated that they're more willing to do a review of the webpage that we see, and if they're, if they can, they will give approval or a negative declaration on those back to us, and. And my understanding is that they all, all three of them will respect their peers' decisions, meaning that if the person from the DNR or the state archaeologist responds and they have a, a negative declaration, meaning that we're good to go forward, that the other ones would recognize that. So based on that.
Does that include TIPPA?
Pardon?
Does that include TIPPA?
TIPPA, no. So going forward with our stat, internally, what we would do is when we prepare a timber sale, we'll go through all the protocols identifying where it's at and all the things we do right now. But then prior to posting that for sale, we'd send those, that information to, to the tribe, to the TIPPA officer, all the sales. But the ones that, where we have no indication of any archaeological finds or anything like that on it, we wouldn't necessarily have to send those to the state offices. But if there is an indication on a web portal that we have, that there might be some findings there, then we would have to send that to the state for review or contract with archaeologists to do a finding or to, to review that. But I would recommend that we try sending it to the state first, to the three different departments, and see if we can get a response. Most of those departments work, the three different departments do work together informally, and there really is no formal process on how you notify them and what their response is, and most of it's just an email. I just say, well, you, if you send it off to them, they, they say they've reviewed it. At least that's my understanding. And you, they, they don't see any reason or don't have any concerns, then you're, you're permitted to move forward on that timber cut.
Well, I can't tell you how disappointed I am that Dustin didn't follow up what he said he was going to do. Indicated that they would do a walk on the property that week. We act, we actually asked, they have a tribal, they had a tribal council meeting on Friday, asked if you guys wanted to answer any questions or be present for that. And that, sounds like that fell through, they didn't follow through during the walkthrough. And I guess I mentioned this when we had our meeting, that, you know, Dustin seemed like he was, would be good to work with. But at the end of the day, it's just like state government. If the, the governor tells the commissioner of DNR or the, whatever commissioner, if the governor comes in and says to do something, they have to do it. Just like the tribal council comes and tells one of their employees what to do, they have to do. I mean, they don't have the option of, in these hot items. So I'm not necessarily blaming Dustin, but I'm pretty sure he probably got direction from above that, for some reason, not, not to have that meeting. And I guess if you, if we're ghosted, we're ghosted and we don't have, I mean, what do you, what do you do?
We try.
But I, I think it's noteworthy that we asked for TIPPA to be on site last week. And we asked for Dustin Roy to do a walkthrough with Mitch and Steve on site, and they would not, were not responsive. I don't think you can, I don't think we can stress that enough, that we are, we, we will work with tribal on these issues, but we can't work with them when they won't respond and won't, and won't do what they say they're going to do. So I don't know what, I don't know where you go when you have someone that says we're not working with them and they won't go, they won't even do what they've said they're going to do. What, what is our option? It's, it's disheartening. They say they want to work with us, and then they, then they won't, so I don't know.
That's common for them, though. And so we just got to.
But I think we need to, we need to document it and say.
Yeah.
Why, why are we to, why are we to blame when we're trying to work with, with them and, in all sincerity, willing to, willing to avoid sensitive areas? And, and we have, get no response? That's, that's what's disheartening. And then, then they tell people that counties won't work with them.
Well, and you know, it's not about the artifacts, or they'd be looking for them. I keep, if they keep, they, they, if they were so concerned about artifacts, they should be looking for them right now, and they're not. It's, they just want to poke us in the eye, and that's what they're doing, and we'll just have to do everything that legally that we have to do and then go cut the wood.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think perhaps one of the next steps that we've spoken about is reaching out to the tribe. They do have their informal meeting, I believe it's Monday? Do I have the right day? Monday, and then their formal on Friday. And I think we could at least make that request to the two of you and myself to meet with them informally on Monday and see if they take, to have some further discussion about process and that we've requested them to do walkthroughs, et cetera, and at least try that.
I might, I think their, their election is on Tuesday, isn't it?
Holding till after.
I would, I would probably just say, may as well wait till after their election. Because I think, to be honest, I think this is all about a, election, so.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, but I, I just thought that that was perhaps a, a good next step that we could attempt for communication with them.
I certainly think that, that should be our next, I mean, we certainly attempt that avenue also. And at, at your, at whatever works for you in the near future. Obviously, the next, you know, next one might be.
Yeah, and they do their informal, I can't remember exactly what Dustin.
Every Monday.
Yeah, every Monday. So I thought that might be a good, more informal discussion that we could perhaps have with, with their tribal council. My understanding is that they're all present, or the majority is there. So that will be our next attempt sometime in June.
Good. See if they'll invite you. I agree. Anything else, Mitch?
We're just continuing to work on stuff, and yeah. Keep in the book.
Sure. Thank, thank Mitch, too, for working Saturday morning and getting his operators out to the tram. And I think there was about a dozen people across, just Saturday afternoon. Sunday was a little different day with the rain and wind and stuff, so.
And, you know, the other thing is communication with the tribe. You are forwarding all, you know, sales and all, even the, in the tree planting, I mean, make sure we, and, and I think, I think it's clear we have to send it to numerous people because they're not sharing information amongst themselves either, it doesn't seem like, so.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. We'll take a five to ten minute break. You need one?
I need one, yeah. I'll use a break.
County engineer Jim Olson.
Yes, just one item for your consideration today. We have some quotes that we solicited for gravel crushing at our Karkin Inn and Bad Medicine Pit. We received two quotes and the local quote is from Central Specialties in the amount of 550 cubic yard for a total of $137,500. We're recommending approval of award to Central Specialties.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Richard, second by David. Through the discussion, the only thing I mentioned, Jim, in the planning for future crushing sites, if they could, this is for 25,000 cubic yards in two locations. And if you can plan ahead and just do 20, 25,000 in one location, you should get a better unit price instead of mobilization costs. Any townships reach out to you up in those areas?
We didn't hear from any, no.
Okay. With that, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thanks, Jim.
All right, thanks, Jim.
There's no one at the finding commission here in beyond Wager.
Well, why don't you come up, we can take Forest Township. Got two of them here.
I guess I'll. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'll give my explanation first of that. So, we have multiple townships, other cities, obviously, within Becker County that are permitting things. We've had this discussion just recently with the Pelican River watershed that we don't want to be redundant in requiring more than one permit. Part of the problem with Forest Township is them being more restrictive than us. If we're going to apply a building permit to, say, the property in question, which is Mr. Matt Hanson's, Forest Township requires 150-foot setback from wetlands. They require 100-foot setback from right of ways. We're obviously considerably less than that. Our most restrictive road setback is 45 feet at a times, a minimum of 20. Therefore, issuing permits in that district is difficult and, again, redundant. So, I guess I don't have a solution for that. My idea was is the more restrictive agency or local unit of government would be applying their permit.
Yeah.
Because if they're approved at Forest, they're following Becker County's.
Right, so may, you know.
No.
Well, Forest Township may not be looking at impervious surface or something like that, but I would say that if you're going to take on the control, you're going to have to take it all on. We both can't, I can't go there and look at impervious and then have a building be setback or enforce our setback when they don't match. I mean, again, we have townships with subdivision control. They're not both subdividing through us, although our ordinances are the same. But I would suggest that Forest adopt our ordinances. But to have two different ones and try and coincide is pretty difficult.
Lynn, do you want to speak?
Uh, yes, I'd like to.
Yeah, please, over here.
We have several concerns. As my letter indicates, talking to the MAT attorneys, we have no authority trading or anything to enforce the county ordinances. We, the only thing that we are authorized to enforce is mostly the road setback. So, I do not look at distance from lot lines. So, you know, you're supposed to have a 10-feet, I cannot enforce that. Heights of buildings, how far away from septic systems, or all the other different ones. There's lots of different county ordinances that we depend on the county to enforce. So, I only can enforce the two or three more restrictive ordinances within our township and I, we cannot do the county ones. So, there is that issue of, of that people don't have any restrictions. I can't force them to do, I can't enforce county ordinances. So, that's part of it, is that?
Yeah, we can't enforce county ordinance.
And that's, that's according to the MAT attorneys. So, anything where anybody would put a building on the lot line, I can't enforce that. The neighbor wants to sue, that becomes a county liability and not a township liability. So, and.
I guess I'm, I'm little, so all you got, all Forest Township has is three ordinances that you're asking that you are different from ours, is that correct, Oria?
Most, all of our ordinances depend on the county to enforce. We do a more restrictive on, from the distance from the road, from a public road.
Road setback.
As road setback. And we do have in our conservation district that any kind of residence would have to have a 20-acre plot. But those are pretty much the only ones.
Those aren't a major.
Yeah, and we don't really, nobody is really building on a, outside in the conservation. It's mostly the road that we deal with.
I, I mean, I just, just, I just need to have some dialogue because to better understand.
Sure.
If you have two or three ordinances, I mean, that are, I'm thinking, in my opinion, then, then you, then the county is giving all the permits and they would just put a line on, say, Forest Township has more restrictive than this. If it's three ordinances, list those three ordinances and you may require, you may, this may not be applicable if it doesn't meet Forest Township's zoning requirements, which are listed or.
But then.
But the county can't.
The county can't enforce ours.
No.
Can?
No.
Cannot.
Cannot, yeah.
Well, I think we could if we adopted them, but I, I think we will, that's not.
No.
I mean, our, the county does not intend, in my opinion, to enforce township's individual ordinances. I mean.
Right, right.
Whether, but, so, Kyle, what's, trying to think, how many, do you see it as just three ordinances? Or can you?
Well, it could be conditional use permits, it could be variances, it could be a magnitude of things.
Well, I think the townships should have the ability to pass ordinances, say, they don't want, say, they want minimum lot sizes for something. And if that's their only ordinance, I think, I don't see what to, I mean, I know it will be, I know it'd be some cross-checking, but.
Well, it's going to be, it's just going to be, continue to be more, just like, for instance, Ottenman putting a moratorium on campground. It seems fine when you have one, but if we have all 37 doing this, where are we going to draw a line? Because we have, we have six now with ordinance, we have Walworth and Spring Creek and those guys up there that are all, all these townships are getting involved in ordinances and we're expected to know that many different ones. And again, I can't approve a permit that doesn't mean, I mean, we almost need an MLA or something like we're doing with Pelican here because.
Well, I, I think we accommodate townships. I think the smallest form of government's directing their, what their residents want. I, I think, I think maybe we, maybe we'll look at a fee if you have ordinance. Maybe we look at an assessment for, to the township saying, you know, if you're going to do this, this creates us extra work and, and maybe we accommodate that way. But I certainly don't want to discourage townships for doing government work.
Hey, Kyle, just a clarification, if somebody comes in and gets a building permit from Forest Township and they want a setback from their road right of way at 75 feet, can you approve that building permit?
No.
So, that's.
By our ordinance, I can, but not by theirs.
No, because it states on there setback.
No, I'm, I'm legally binding by my ordinance.
Yeah.
Now, I'm enforcing.
See, that's where the issue is.
If I'm saying I can build here at 75, I'm now enforcing your ordinance.
So.
You're not enforcing it, you're, you're, you're.
Well, I would be because I'm telling someone no or yes.
Well, I think first, just a thought, for those certain townships, do we, on the build, have, I mean, a special building permit, special process for those townships that have their own, that we don't do anything with setback? If, if the Forest Township has more restrictive setback, then they enforce setback, we, I mean, we would have to draw that out in the building permit. But I don't think we should be enforcing it.
John, you have a, well, we're not, we're not enforcing it by lawsuit. We'd just be signing or not signing.
Mm-hmm.
If I can offer a suggestion, all that would be required, you're not, we're not asking that you enforce Forest Township, we do our own, and the county enforces theirs. All that would be required that I can see is that the county simply notify people, we try to let everyone know that a Forest Township permit may be required in addition to this. Our ordinance is posted online, so anyone can look at or contact Lynn. So, all you need to do is say, you also need to check with them if your building in the conservation zone. We do not regulate the zone, possibly, the lake shore zone, mainly the area beyond that.
We've really been coordinating with the county. This has been in place for 14 years since 2006. I've been here for 12 years. So, we've been working together with the county for all of these years and it's not been an issue. They just have to do two, we have a nominal fee that we require so that we have some meat to our ordinance, you know, otherwise they kind of ignore us sometimes. But anyway, so that's, that's why it was implemented, you know, back in when we updated our ordinances. But these rules have been in place there, we became a township in 1979 when we broke away from Round Lake and.
So, I think your solution would be we sign off on it and with the caveat, pending, pending township approval. Maybe that's all we need.
Or you don't even need to have pending township approval. All you have to do is notify people, is an additional layer of regulation and that they should consult the township. And.
I think then we, we have to have a form or something from every township that wants that to be specific on, you know, so every, so when we do that, we attach the, whatever form they have, I mean, we'll just, if an application comes in for, you know, whatever township it is, some townships won't have anything, so then this is it. If there's an attachment, you know, or a sign off, please see attachment, there, there are more, township has another.
Does the, do townships typically notify you when they have an ordinance or new ordinance?
Well, they would, they would.
The last two that were implemented, we got no notification.
I think that's, that communication with townships is essential for, to work for them and for us.
I went to their last, I went to Ottenman's meeting and they never even notified me. They were voting on a moratorium before I locked out the door and it was passed. I mean, I was sitting there, they didn't say, hey, stick around here. And we've still never got that.
Got a notification now?
No, for all we know, there isn't one, but that was physically.
Probably, I think township, we just have to have better, I mean, we have to stress the communication needs from townships to, I mean, that, that is essential for.
Well, and this is maybe something for us to bring up in the fall at the township meeting.
But those, it's not attended by all townships.
It's just continuing to get worse. I mean, for instance, Riceville Township has a road agreement with Callaway and Callaway just granted a building permit by resolution, one foot from the right of way. And the dirtwork's been done. I mean, townships need to get reined in a little bit here because they're practicing things that maybe shouldn't be added, but.
Well, if that's outside of ours, if that road is a, don't we have county resolution or county?
We have county setbacks, but now the, the farmer thought he was okay because of what that township did. I'm just saying, we're getting more of this. I mean, it just seems to be more frequent that they're getting into zoning.
Well, I think, I think it's our job or somebody's job to stress to the townships the, the serious ramifications that come from improper zoning that they allow or don't allow. There, I mean, both ways, there are, I mean, it's, you can't arbitrarily allow someone to do something and the next person not, so, I mean, there are consequences. Maybe we have some guidelines for townships too.
I was going to say, maybe we send a letter to every township asking and maybe we have to send it out every year or every.
Because they.
Just for us to open up that communication and make sure that the communication is there. Because we can only do what we know.
Oh. Just, Kyle, just clarification, that Ottenman Township did that moratorium and that was a public hearing for a moratorium?
I, I asked, I asked Pete Anderson and, and they had an attorney working with them, so, because I said, I asked the same question.
I noticed out to the public what you're have to do.
I asked, because I was concerned, had the same concerns, and he said, we had an attorney draw this all up for us and do it, and so I just like.
Well, the moratorium, but.
Right.
But the notice.
The implementing.
I left it like that, I said, if you, you got an attorney, you are doing it right.
Well, he drew it up.
No, I think they just, and I think they just dropped it off with us, but they, they, not to mine, no.
Okay. So.
I was going to say, I think it's a matter of public law that townships can only be more restrictive. We cannot.
Right.
Vary your county ordinance to make it less restrictive.
Right.
So, it can only be more restrictive.
Well, that's across from state to county to city to township. But it's just a problem of having magnitude of different ones where this is.
Well, I think, I think if we include, we don't need to necessarily know what the township ordinances are. We need to just know that they have them, so that when we have, say, a Forest Township building permit, then we know when we had, when we look at it for our ordinance, we then say, you need to also check with your township. Or we just tell every person to check with their township.
And they may have done that before.
Good practice.
Before or after, I mean, they may have already done that.
Yeah.
Some of them might have gotten the.
I think that it is, when Kyle took over, they started doing more coordination with, looking at what the townships require. So, you know, he's done pretty good at, at coordinating that. You know, I have always felt that we, we should be working together, you know, if we've got concerns or, or questions. A lot of times, I've got questions, because I don't always know all the county ordinance, I don't like reading, I'm sorry, don't like reading, it's hard, anyway, but, but we, I really feel it should be coordinated, we should be working together on it. We're not trying to overstep the county ordinance, that has been an integral part of our ordinances, that they do the county pieces, and we just have a couple restrictive ones. And the only one that really that I deal with is that, is the distance from the road. Right now, it looks like I've got five buildings, I do the planning and zoning for, so I always say aye, it's us. And, but we've got five buildings, and I'm always wondering, well, how do those buildings, how does our assessor find out about those buildings? Because they're not gonna be listed in the, the county anymore, because, and that's how our assessor knows that there's new buildings to assess. I know that she's on a five-year rotation, it could be five years before she finds out there's a new building. And that's revenue loss for the county, the state, the townships, if that's not, so, you know, those.
It's not revenue lost, it's revenue pushed to others.
Right, right.
Because we, we cack some.
True.
Um, but it's still, you know, should be part of that, so there's.
We go with that argument, or that on farm, farm buildings too.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, we've had that talk quite a while, that there's no permit required for any egg buildings.
True.
And the size of egg buildings, that might be something, we're getting to the end of that rule.
Oh.
But, so. I, I don't think we want to discourage townships from their, from being their government agency. I think we should work on the relationships, and if there's a more restrictive ordinance in the townships, that we figure out what's, what we're legally, how we can legally sign off on that, and notify the applicant that there is another layer here that they may need. And some townships will have it, and some, some, and it might, we just have to make sure that, we, we ask that townships have an easy process to get that. I know even like at Corment Watershed, they're very easy, I mean, Ellis Peterson will come out and give you a permit on-site, I mean, so, or at, you know, so you don't, you're not delayed or, or held up, if, you know, in those circumstances.
And maybe we just make it a common practice, if more townships are, are coming up with their own ordinance, we just make it practice to tell people to check with your township.
I think there's a note in the system doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Put one in there, there's none.
Mm-hmm. And then we're, we only enforce ours, and it's up to the applicant to.
And I think that's.
Come in contact with the, with the township.
Yeah, I think it's up to each township, if they change ordinance to get a copy to county's own, so they know.
Mm-hmm, right.
And we should work, we should work that into our system on, online, so that, once they hit a township, what township it's in, it should, it should be a, maybe a second direction, that this, this permit is also required from.
So, have the township's owning ordinances on.
Well, that'd be the handiest, if you're looking at what's easiest for the.
At least a link, because we have our own webpage with all the information there. So, all you'd need is a link, which is pretty easy to.
Not for me, it's not easy.
Well, I know, sometimes a little.
That's why we have IT.
Me too, I understand.
I know, even the, but I think today, I think we want to give direction that we want to work with townships and, and, I, I believe we enforce the county ordinance, and if they have anything more restrictive, that they, that they are responsible for that, in the enforcement, and that they are, there's nothing less restrictive, and I think we, we know that with state, we can't be less restrictive, the state, townships can't be less restrictive, but I think we have to work on that relationship and, and how we notify, let those people know. But I would certainly think that we would be the, the enforcement of all of the county rules, except for, you know, and not including those that would be specific for townships.
And conditional use.
We don't want to make some investments in, not, not these guys, because they work with it a lot, but like I said, we just had a township pass a resolution for a building permit one foot from right-ofway. The more, and, and I'm on a town board, so obviously, I like local government, but the more we encourage them, the more messier this is getting. We have two townships up there at each other's throat right now, because one thinks the resolution is valid, and the other one says, no, it's not. So, I mean, we're gonna have to educate these guys somehow, so calling a meeting is probably the best thing.
I think we touched base with Roger Winner and let him know, and maybe get him, get him involved at least, so he can let the people know that there's issue, the townships know their issues. But, I mean, Corment Township does their border adjustments too, and I think they've done relatively good job. I mean, once, but you have to, these aren't small, I mean, we have to let these people, these aren't small tasks that you're do, that you're getting involved in, these are.
No, they're not, and there's liability.
And it's significant, so, and if they want to take that responsibility, I want to, I want to allow that or encour, encourage, encourage them to do it, but we can't, on the other, on the flip side of that, we can't ask every township to have a competent zoning staff that can handle these, I mean, the whole county ordinances.
That's, and that's my only concern, is now when we're encouraging them to do that, but they're making decisions, and then we have to clean them up now, because they were doing things less restrictive than us. So, our ordinance implied, and then it gets messy.
We would have to clean up anything that's less restrictive of us, no matter what.
Right, but encouraging them to get involved is where I get a little hesitant.
Well, we don't necess, we're not encouraging them to, to pass ordinance, we're encouraging them to be, if they are, that they have to be knowledgeable and, and enough to enforce and take the, take the liability for it.
And maybe if you're seeing that, maybe sending a letter again to the township, say, like, reminding them, you can pass your own ordinances, however, you can't be less restrictive.
They cannot, nothing can be less restrictive, and you are liable for any legal cost, because we, all we are going to do is send this, we'll either attach a letter or, or, or email stating that this, this may or may not require a township permit also, it's up to the applicant to do that, and if they don't, and they follow our rules and build, and they don't follow, if the township is required, then to go after them in whatever way, shape, form they.
Right.
Choose to, it's not, it's not us, it's.
Well, and I think when we find, find a township that's less restrictive, it is up to us to notify them that this isn't a legal ordinance, right?
Not necessarily, it's probably a state thing, honestly, I don't think a county, a county, I'm not gonna go up and.
We're not gonna allow someone to.
Not gonna litigate with a town, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yep.
We're not.
But we're not gonna, we're not gonna allow someone to build one foot off our road.
No, I'm certainly gonna talk to them, yes. I'm just saying, that's the problems we're having, because you guys are not grasping it. For instance, the moratorium you just mentioned, I don't want to get into the legalities of it, but I know of no public notice, that's not legal.
Mm-hmm.
This is just, and we have an application on the table, so now we're navigating that, we're spending resources to fix that problem, that's not good. That's all I'm saying, it just seems to be a.
Well, I think, like, Forest Township, I mean, county's gotta enforce theirs, and.
I think the best thing, yeah, we just put on there, that, I mean, if you guys want, the other thing is, is when we started doing this with Pelican, I thought we were getting somewhat away from the redundancy, but if you.
But, but Pelican has full staff to do the job that.
Oh.
I mean, and Corment has enough staff now, they can do the job. These townships don't have the staff, and they're, and they don't.
They don't go to every site, whether we permit or not, so that's, like.
Well, they're not, the township boards aren't going to every building permit.
If, if they have one, and beyond 267, that was my point. So, when we talked about Pelican, is we were saving staff time by not being redundant, is what we were talking about. So, they're gonna, whatever they're interested in, they were gonna take, and we were not going to, just, that would be the same here. We're actually using double the staff by going this route, where with Pelican, we were eliminating staff time, is, that was my thought.
I don't know that we're adding any staff time for us unless, because it should be, should be Forest Township's issue if there's an issue on-site. I mean, I, I think.
No, that's fine, we can, we'll keep, we'll, we'll permit if that's the, your, I'm just gonna have, put on a, on a site, not specific to Forest, I'm gonna say, you need to speak with your township.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
That should be great.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And for conditional use permits and anything, we notify the.
Right.
Township.
They have their own.
Yep, but, but if we have a conditional use permit, let's just say, in Forest Township, we notify the township board, the town board, so.
And variances, we get notification.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple other items, Kyle?
Planning Commission recommendations from April 24th. The first is Cheyenne Commercial Condos requesting a final plat for 69 units to be known as Elite Storage Condos. Recommendation to approve, there are some slight changes on the northern portion, just to accommodate for stormwater, it looked like.
I had a, I had a question for you, so, for a mandatory EAW, it's 49 units, is that correct? 50 units?
49 units for a campground.
Camp, it's campground, not?
I don't know of storage EAW requirements off the top of my head, but for, for resorts, it's 49. And then residential houses, that's a different number.
Okay, uh, the, obviously, the dirtwork is being, is started already on this, but he said at the day he was gonna have us all moved, all the water flowing east, and I'm looking at the dirtwork, and there's, it's a, it's gonna be a, I don't know how you're gonna do that.
I know he's got Corment Watershed involved on that, I believe.
Yeah, the watershed, the watershed had a permit, and that's why the two less units.
Oh.
But I just, I just looked at it, and I don't, it's significant, significant moving dirt to get this water to moving direction, and I, I don't know the big deal, which way it goes, because it, both, both of them go into kind of sediment ponds or slews, I mean, so it's gonna, before, but, I mean, it goes, that, that water eventually ends up in Big Corment Lake, so you kind of want it, but I don't see anything different or not to approve today, I just had the question.
I think there is EAW requirements for storage, but I'm not familiar with them off the top of my head.
If you, if you want to question, if you want to go look at this site after it's done, and you think, I just think this is ridiculous myself, on this, how, how, how congested this will be in a, in a totally rural area, and nothing around it is, is a commercial or resident, or it's, but, it's, it's, the first, the problem I have, the first part's all crushed rock, they crush rock on the whole parcel, and four big buildings and all crushed rock, and the new one will be grass in between, but it's, there's not gonna be much pervious surface. What did he use, 60, 68, 60, 64.9% of?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, anyway.
Questions of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat.
Motion by Erica. I'll second.
For, you want to add Elite Storage Condos, and that, so we know exactly what it's for?
For the Elite Storage Condos, yes.
Yeah, Cheyenne one, right of me. Further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Voice? Correct.
The only other applicant, a couple were tabled, one withdrew, so the next one is Wright Investments, requesting a preliminary plat for three lots to be located as Dakota Woods Condominium Association.
Move to concur upon your voting.
Second. Did you move?
You second?
Yeah.
Motion by me, second one, Barry, further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anything else before the commission? Up, for your turn.